All right, I'll call the Budget Committee regular meeting. This is not the public hearing everyone. To order at 5:05 PM. We just have one act we have to take as a board. We're minutes on here because can we handle that first and then? All right, the so first order of business is to approve minutes from 1:06:25 to 1:07:25. Should be in the packet. This is just for the Budget Committee.
Motion wait seven.
I'll second.
Good motion in a second. Is everybody able to hear us all right down there?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion, questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And carries? Okay. So our next order of business is to deal with any new things that we have before the public hearing. So, um, I think we had, oh Jeremy, you want to, uh, you want to speak up here and mention anything that you think needs to be addressed?
No, we have a new highway amount. Library amount changed.
So the highway amount?
Yeah.
Do we just have to ratify that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so that's going to be page?
Five hundred and one.
Is that being done, is that in our packet?
Public hearing.
How about the one that says the meeting packet?
Yeah, this is information.
Same amount?
Yeah.
All right, so you guys just have the meeting packet then, which would be the highway budget standalone. Jeremy, what's the change on that?
The highway, uh, was used.
What's the substance of the change? That was the prorating the payroll, payroll raises.
The last time John met with the Budget Committee was the four years increases, so I prorated those and then I changed the social security and retirement line.
Okay, and so to confirm, we've prorated all payroll raises across the entire budget, so it's consistent from one budget to that. Okay, so the new number is four, seven, five, six, five, five, which is a reduction, I don't know what it is, but we thought about it. He said never go back to it, John. It was four, eight, two, zero, one, seven. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the new number of four, seven, five, six, five, five. I move to approve four, seven, five. Four, seven, nine, six, five, five for Highway Department. Are you in motion?
I'll second.
Good motion in a second. Everybody understand what we did there? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Okay, motion for, um, Highway Department. Five, down, four, seven, five, six, five, five. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We had a library change too, Jeremy?
Steve presented it last meeting.
Okay, I think we approved that. Budget Committee approved that, so it's like what needs to be approved though.
And was that one, how far down, Steve?
It was, it was down.
Can't be. That actually can't be.
Can't go all the way, man.
That can't be the case.
Five hundred and one, seven, six, five, five.
Yeah, five hundred and one, seven, six, three, five.
Yeah, that's a new number, right? I'm looking for the old number right now.
That should be the same as what?
That's not what we have. Okay, so, so what we did was, was lines within the budget swapped. Yeah, but the bottom, the bottom line stayed the same. Any other questions?
Nope.
Adam, did you make a change with Town Clerk?
No, no, we weren't gonna. The two, Town Clerk, two hundred and fifty, no. Public hearing, we're asking now. Um, I think we should probably address that now. Okay. All right. And then we can just make notes for going through the public hearing that that number is going to be adjusted. Somebody helping to remember, I guess, as we're going through. So the?
Before we get off the library, I think that this?
Yeah, you guys want to address the library. I know it's only changed within the budget, but the overall budget.
Overall, the overall total is the same.
Okay, fine.
All right, so the Town Clerk sent two notes to me to ask me to present them tonight. One, um, there was a employee who turned in their, uh, for an election worker, their time card came in after books were closed for 2024. So they need to increase their 2025 budget to cover this $880 that was paid out. We've done that before with other lines when things get missed like that.
Is that intended to come out of the budget in?
Twenty twenty-six.
Because it's really a 2025, I mean, 2024 is what it's here.
So that's $880, um, line four, one, four, zero, dash, one, oh, two. So that needs to go up by eight eighty. And then the second note was today, uh, apparently the state of New Hampshire has sent out this week to all towns a $600 bill, which nobody apparently was looking for, so nobody had it built into their budget. With the official ballot election configuration and programming. So it's a $600 bill that must be paid, um, that wasn't in her budget before, she doesn't know that it's coming.
Is that four, one, four, zero also?
This one is four, one, three, two.
Okay, so that's part of the actual tax collector budget, yeah?
Yeah, she must put in four, one, three, two, two, four, three, computer services, is your thought? Again, that's $600.
That's because of the House saying that we're passing a state from the law on programing ballots. Each town will be charged for.
So our two, our, our two increases are, um, account four, one, three, two is going to go from one, six, nine, nine, five, eight to?
Uh, plus six hundred.
So, one, seven, five, nine, five, eight? Did you say six hundred?
Six hundred.
Oh, so.
One, seven, oh.
One, seven, oh.
Five, five, eight.
Somebody jot that down, please.
Yeah, got it.
And then four, one, four, zero is going to go up by the eight eighty, you said?
Correct.
Great job. So that's going to be? Five, four?
Four, six.
Five, four, four, six. Five, four, four, six. And we need a note on that to move that down to the next year's first paragraph. So did everybody get that? This is on page fourteen and fifteen of the, uh, public hearing handout. I take the motion on the two, if you want to do it that way.
I move to be increase the two lines previously discussed for election registration and for the Town Clerk. One for $880, the other for $600. Note from the table.
I'll second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Catch all that?
Yep. So, I would entertain a motion for tax collector, or tax clerk, so tax collector's office to increase to one, seven, five, five, eight. And the election registration change to five, four, four, six. One new bill, and one new to? Yeah, council.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the next thing that we, um, had, the next thing that we had to discuss is going to be, um, in the warrant itself, it's going to be, page six of your public hearing handout, Article fifteen, Capitol Reserve Fund deposits. Page seven, Article sixteen, Expendment Truck Fund deposits. Uh, the question was, was there any adjustments that need to be made around this? In my note it says, um, see, uh, based on CIP committee work. Is there any recommendations that the CIP committee had to make changes on this?
So there should be a sheet in your packet with a list of the history of when we funded each fork. And then if you go down to the middle, that's the replacement cost per year for highway fire and police. So that's the average amount per year that based on the CIP's work of spending that for ten years, you'd have to put in per year to stay. Highway department is sixteen, three thousand, one, seven, five. Fire was under eleven thousand, five hundred. Police was forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty.
And that is, um?
And that's also not taken into account when it's already, it's already.
That's only the Capitol Reserve, so that's Article fifteen only, so we're not talking about Article sixteen yet. Because it looks like there's only recommendations for highway fire and police. True?
Yes.
Okay. Currently, Fire Department is at twenty-five. Am I missing it on this page of where the recommended increases?
These, these numbers don't take into consideration.
They're sort of cash, straight up.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, so starting with the Fire Department, it looks like it goes from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and thirteen, one hundred and seventy-three. On the Police Department, it goes from ten, is that our current one, or twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, it goes from twenty to forty-five, nine, thirty-eight. And in the Highway, ha, I thought it was the first number, it's definitely not a million a year because that doesn't happen. The Highway Department is at twenty-five, not highways and streets, but the department itself is at twenty-five, and now they go up to sixty-four, one, twelve. My two senses, I would wait to do this for next year. That's what I would do if it's like right at the last minute.
Yeah.
And there's not a lot of time to really, you know, have, have a nice open conversation about this, that would be bad. You know, this is a great starting point in this, it should be a topic of conversation in our, in our very first meeting of next year's budget season, so. But, um, and we can, we can start that earlier.
I think the biggest difference why it's so long or so high is because, let's say we were to put the Fire Department's cheapest one, Mark, a pumper truck is out of town?
It's over eight hundred thousand right now for the cheapest pumper you can buy.
And then if we had to replace a ladder, it's?
You know, a million, million and a half.
So.
Say an engine will be over a million by probably within the next year or two.
And if we look at, you know, just what we did with this sort of police cars, things aren't getting cheaper and we have to compensate for those that go along, I mean, Highway Department will buy a truck, but if anything else goes out there, even a new excavator, even a used one, we're looking at a decent amount of money. So. As soon as we start thinking about it, like, like I said, start at the beginning of the year, start planning ahead of time to break down the numbers a little bit more and put it in a figure for not including the fire in there, I know we are training the police cars and stuff, but, but that's kind of what it is.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, the, the work looks good and it's, it's definitely needed, no doubt about it, I just think it is. And I've been asking for CIP for a long time, so it's, it's nice to see some, some work product for sure.
A harsh reality.
Yeah, uh, it definitely has to happen, it's just one of those things, like, okay, we're, we're, we're there. Now it's, now it's time to just polish it up a little bit and make sure we, we're all happy with it. But, um, yeah, that's my, just my, just my opinion, so if you guys want to, want to make a motion otherwise, that's, that's absolutely prerogative of those.
I'm, I'm with you.
Vote that down there?
No, I don't think we're ever going to be happy with the numbers that we need in order to replace those things. But, you know, you have to start thinking about saving for it.
Yeah, I think regardless, it's going to be a hold your breath and, and vote yes at some point, but?
Yeah.
It's, I, I just, this is the first time I'm actually seeing the numbers, so that's why I can't, I can't vote in there for a minute.
The, uh, we had a, a county budget hearing yesterday. No public, it was president of course. And, uh, the new ambulance service is now going to be replacing, they have six ambulances and they, their replacement scheduled is two ambulances a year. Every year for? So you'll see that in your county taxes.
They have a bottomless, it's all, it's all, um? Doesn't the paper itself?
Yeah.
That's what's the plan?
No.
That's not a joke, that's a fact.
The hearings consist. The hearings at six, so, yeah. All right, yeah, that's perfect. Yep, yep, that's good. Um, on the Budget Committee side, I don't hear any actions, so we're going to just table this until our first meeting of the, of the season on, on our side.
Any action on ours, I guess? All right, take a look, Tim.
I just wondered if we should do a inflation adjustment on these numbers.
Yeah. Probably do an inflation study and see what it's going to be.
Yeah, one point five seems really awful, based on recent inflation numbers.
And then, you know, maybe those things are maybe down, down south or up north. Are twenty-five percent or ten percent, put that in more of a rap.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts going on right now to add any decisions, the, knowing what those outcomes are.
But what I'm saying is, like, just take the, take what we're going to have here and put an inflation adjustment on it. Starts to fall.
So we're saying about twenty-five percent now, or either twenty percent now, or?
Ten, fifteen percent, just some, something, just a little more away.
Do it to ten or twenty, because those are much easier math numbers. Oh, sorry, you bet, in, in?
I get it, I get it.
Segments of ten percent. Is that a motion, Steve?
Yeah, let's, let's go for ten percent.
This is a, um, this is kind of like a gray area, it sits here as a warrant article, but it comes up in the Auburn budget, so you guys, you guys want to come to some sort of agreement on a?
I'm good with ten percent.
Ten percent and escalate around all of it?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, good then. Okay, so we're going to motion on our side to do ten percent, can I get a second on that? Good motion in a second for Matt. Um, everybody understand what we're doing? Uh, any further discussion?
Well, do we need to do that as reassessment?
That's the discussion. On the, um, on the next one, on?
We're, we're living in, first of all, we're living in Capitol Reserve funds, right?
Yeah, and I was, I was, I was doing it across the board, but I, that's what I understood the motion to do.
That was, but, okay. I'm hoping that that for discussion.
Okay. Well, you're only adding two grand to that, so it's probably, that's probably? Be not that much.
How would you be worried to that motion, to do ten percent or what?
Um, everything in Article fifteen. For each department will get its own ten percent. So the whole article is going to go up by fourteen thousand dollars. Is that still the motion then, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. So we got a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, who adjusted that? So moved.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, we have Article sixteen, um, right after that, that kind of falls in the same discussion. Is there any, any action we want to take on that? There's no recommendation on this from the CIP.
I still think we need to adjust for inflation on this one. Motion to increase it by ten percent.
Same motion on Article sixteen, do I have a second? Motion in a second.
That makes me agree with you.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, it does. I think we've been doing these numbers for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, we've bumped, I think, the Police Department, we bumped up one time, but, um, mostly it's been, it's been flatlined a long time, so. Any other discussion or questions?
We're not hearing well down in here.
So Article sixteen, same motion.
Just ten percent?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And we got a motion in a second on it, so. Do you understand the, the last motion?
Yes, yes.
I heard it's the last one with this one, if you didn't hear that one, then you have to.
Now I can hear that, you got quiet.
Um, yes, so, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
All right, Article sixteen, they offered real ten percent of the totals. So moved. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
For future reference, let's think of these things before we hit to the public hearing, because it just makes the deliberate public hearing much easier.
We need adjustments in here.
Yeah, so what we're discussing at, at the, at the public hearing in about fifteen minutes will.
I will mark this one up.
Okay. Okay. Adams, Adams is going to read, so, yeah. Um, so next, I think we're getting close to the end here, Jeremy, am I forgetting anything? Oh, the, um, the Select Board needs to act on the, um, I think it's sitting at the last article right now, Article forty-four, page thirteen. This is for the excavator for the highway.
Did it act on that already? Well, it says dash.
Forty-four. Yeah. Well, there's all the, so, the budget is on actually Article eleven, so it's not, it's not as bad as it sounds.
So, John, is this fine, I'm taking half out from, Highway Department half out from transportation? And that's the transfer station's equipment from special fund? What's the town fee in place that?
require the town.
Anyone have a question? No, they, you know. Yeah, I, I think the, the, um, Department is, uh, it's a, one of the one train farm.
So moved to approve the articles.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are we good for?
Okay, so, we got noted that, that's good. The, the last one was Article forty-five, we got Mount Road, this is, looks like a, like a placeholder, it says language to be determined down here. I don't know how we're going to read that off.
Now, we did, we were, that one happened, of course. That one, we were going to basically? John, do you remember what we kept with Dallas? Again, a question to the?
It was give back fourteen hundred feet of Gann Mountain Road to the property owner and take fourteen hundred feet on West Hill from the Blueberry Farm down.
And basically swap them from one to currently class six and zero to class five and swap.
Correct.
Yeah.
We could, so what the hearing offers us is, as long as we discuss it, it can be crafted after the fact. You guys are actually like, what are they trying to do with that one, that reads off basically what we have written down right there?
So what we have is two small sections of road. And one is currently class six from the door yard at the Blueberry Farm. Asked it, John, how far, what, what did you say, three hundred yards? And it's to swap that out, which, and that has all been upgraded. Uh, and swap that out for a section of what is currently classified as a class five road, but is in fact someone's driveway, it is not maintained. And so from the town's perspective, it's an even Steven swap. We give the guy effectively the driveway and we take the road that's really a road and make it class five. And, uh, we don't lose anything to our block grant, it doesn't change our funding. The, the important people involved in this are the Levics who have their Blueberry operation up there. And they seem to have worked it out satisfactorily with the others that have upgraded the road. And it will allow him to build a house up there. Which is his intention, no BS about it, but it is likely to be, uh, a good investment for the town. So, from our perspective, it's essentially either neutral or plus. And we make at least two people happy. We get out of, Mr. Lang's driveway out over, over here and we make the, uh, the Rollinses and Billy?
Daniels.
Daniels. I'm happy, but they don't, and the Levics are fine with it.
Okay. I'll probably have you explain that again once we get to the public hearing part of it.
Sure.
That's, that's pretty clear to me what you're trying to do, so I'm sure that you have questions.
We can make that in words, written words, it makes sense.
Yeah. There's enough there to, to formulate what you're trying to do in written words. Jeremy, was there anything else that we need to go over prior to public hearing?
There were two changes to the veterans credits that we voted on. Uh, one was, D R A pointed out that.
Uh, article number and page.
I think it's off there now. It's the one that authorized up to three hundred and forty thousand to be exempted. D R A put out that the RSA already allows for that, we really can't adopt that, so I moved that from the law. Then, um.
No, this one's been removed by the law.
And I think forty-one. Uh, we originally voted to have that up to four thousand, but the RSA only allows up to five hundred, D R A pointed out, that's been amended for that. And the only other thing I could think of is, we talked about earlier, Ben, if the selectmen want to do a recommendation on either petition for or, they don't have to. Obviously, the budget committee.
Yeah, we, we were looking at the R S As and it allows for, the budget committee has to if there's a dollar amount involved, uh, there isn't, so the budget committee can't, but the select board has the opportunity to, should they want to, but they're not required to, so.
That's what I was saying. Jeremy, I don't know what I'm gonna say.
Was that the forty? Yeah, that's, that's one that came in a while ago, the water services. The board doesn't have to do a recommendation, they're allowed to. Last year, we didn't do any, any of it.
What was your, what did you say, Chris?
Isaiah, don't make any of that come into.
I think we should, I, we never wanted to do it, and I think that, I think we should not work about it.
Forty-two?
Uh, forty-two. And I think we should stay as far away from forty-three as we can.
So is that a no?
I, I move that we, uh, not recommend Article forty-two.
Alright, got a second?
Awesome.
Alright, any further discussion, Caleb, explain what you're thinking on that one, please?
Which, uh. I think that, as of right now, there has been no issue with issuance of building permits on class six roads in the town of Troy. And I think that, that has been a good plan, and I think that we should stick with it, I think that there is some. Obviously, the law does allow us to issue building permits on class six roads and, uh. I'm concerned that we would put ourselves in a situation where we would lose the ability for some reason to follow that course if we wanted to. I don't know that the town hasn't issued a building permit on a class six road in thirty years, uh, but.
We're calibrating this, it basically would take that ability out of our hands and put it, we'd have to either have it wait till town meeting or call a special town meeting.
Which you're never gonna do, so, you know, I, I, I think it's, I think it makes it overly cumbersome, and I think it's counterproductive. And realistically, how many people are gonna come and really have to know what six seventy-four, Article forty-one is? And it's often been my experience, the people who advocate for this today may be the people who want it tomorrow, and they're gonna be mad because they can't do it. So I, I think we stick with, I think we stick with something that's not, it hasn't been a problem, I think we stick with where we are on this.
Alright. Any questions going on? All those in favor of not recommending this article?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Do we not recommend that or?
Anything else, Jeremy?
Do you want to go over twenty-nine?
You say that with a smile, like it's got problems.
I think, I think we're good there.
Yeah, so. When we laid out, when we laid out Article twenty-nine, and, and the D R A came back and said, you really need to raise and appropriate the first payment amount, uh, which they're right, they're correct in that, otherwise you're raising and appropriating the whole entire amount. And then you're just spending the first payment, so you're just, you're, you're over funding from, from the, from wherever the money's coming from, so. Uh, from an accounting standpoint, it makes sense to put the first payment in there, we did the payment, uh, one-fifth of sixty-five plus eight percent. So, you don't have to spend all that, that's just, that should, that should be more than enough to cover the first payment of whatever vehicle is purchased.
That's fifteen eight one five.
Fifteen eight one five, yep. Yep, so. Did they get a second look at this, Jeremy, the D R A?
Uh, no, I don't think they did.
Okay.
Should that actually say up two?
You can't, you can't do up two, they pulled up two on all of it, first of all, we've been using up two forever, and this year, we got somebody that said, we can't really do up two, so. And in reality, it was more of a, um, more of a descriptor for the public so that they know that we don't have to spend all the money, um, the D R A knows that, everybody creating this thing knows that.
You still don't have to spend.
You still don't have to spend all that money, so if you wanted to, so whatever it was came in less, then the rest goes into the general line.
Jeremy, didn't they make us add up two to number forty-four?
Yeah, they did it too.
They told us you have to put up two in it.
Yep.
And turn out up two on Article forty-four, they added that on us.
Yeah, they did.
And told us take it out of everywhere else. Was it forty-four?
Yeah.
Forty-four says up two.
Yeah, well, no, in, in your email, Jeremy, you said that they said to put it in.
Uh, I had the table on my, yeah.
Oh.
No more up two.
Yeah, that, that shouldn't be in there, I thought there was another up two somewhere else, though, in, uh, in one of those R S As.
There's a few things that he said, and I want to be like, okay, last year was fine.
I think it was in, like, the, the tax, there was up two five hundred or something, I don't know. That works.
The budget committee doesn't have to recommend the taxes.
We haven't, that's, I said, I don't think we should have.
It involves money, but it's not like.
It's not, they're not raising it. Yep, they're not raising it, so, yeah, I think that's right, I might have, I might have argued against it, next year we'll, no?
We haven't, we haven't touched it in a while, that's why we're trying to address it.
We don't, yeah, no, I, I, we're not, um, actually raising and appropriating anything in that article, so, while there is a dollar amount mentioned, it's not, I don't think that's what thirty-two tells us. Okay? Anything else, Jeremy?
I think so.
Okay. Alright, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to recess our meeting until after the public hearing, the public hearing's not gonna start for another sixteen minutes, but we can recess our meeting now, take a, take a little break.
Motion?
Here the motion.
Second?
Motion in a second, that was Matt and Steve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none?
We're gonna go to the public.
Something on Saturday's longer.
For sure.
Alright, so. Take care of that part, please, sir. More number comments, anyone have anything?
I know.
Take a couple of seconds.
Yeah, you are. Okay.
So we'll go ahead and, and I'll credit you, you've been so quick to, you guys, uh, fill the bottom out.
Long as we discuss it, we can make the changes that we were supposed to make.
So the first cut is map eighteen, lot one forty-five, for the group mountain location, that's the channel.
It's amazing, all of this stuff.
I would change the motion, how do we put that one? I mean, certainly, usually, you're. Alright, any further discussion on that one?
All right. Alright.
Alright, the next one, this one I kind of wanted to figure out. And he found a really strong argument on this. But it's not his fault.
It's good for the paper, but. We're gonna take it to it.
What do you guys think, I mean, sliding all three of them.
There's a few stitches?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I vote for that, so, and this is the second extension for Russell's fire. So, Art, right, so we were reading all these procedures, we need to do fully that. You got one stitch? You get one stitch.
No, that's the thing, the paperwork in one part is one, one part is made, but you just want to. It's like, you just, you just have to watch, you just have to stand it twice.
Well, I noticed the.
I mean, if we do it, just to laugh on it, and.
We need to make it.
We need to agree.
Whatever we do, so that based on that, uh.
Long as the board, it has some other interpretation.
What are you doing to specify?
Right. You're gonna use it?
Anyway, so my motion is to.
That's the third to fourth. The other one was worth, we had the old C F, my first, I was way there, and I had to back up, they couldn't. We pulled it when I stopped, I was just firing off the steering wheel. And I was in, I was just going to stop, and I was like. But I got turned on, and I drove, drove outside. Kept everything outside on the road, and then you get, and everybody else, and it's one to the other, you know, you go down a hill, and then you're at the garage, and then you're. And it's not a restoration, so. Yeah, some woman pulled the alarm, because of smoke. Pulled the alarm. Smoker to the left. They knocked it down quick.
Well, they would, they would, you could have approved the.
The other chicks. Seal him down, floor. He said it was down on his, down on his.
Just be calm, I'm just kidding.
We're just making you a call.
This is Tom, I like the coffee.
Yeah.
The next.
I move that we approve.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Fifteen, can you count?
Alright, thank you.
Pink road is out, all these are, they're barely on speed.
We love that.
You went through a lot of work, you stepped up a bit, standard. It's like a standard.
Yeah, I, I sent you the email on that, too. Yeah, the way, the way she has to grab those. Once we, once we get the notes, we'll, we'll figure it out.
As long as you don't want your money back from the government.
Yeah, that's what we're part of the conversation, so.
Any motion?
I move that we adopt the assessing recommendation, which is required to the, uh. Jeremy, that was.
Further discussion?
You are in favor of this one? We're really qualified. Alright, so I didn't understand, I had to ask. Oh, yeah, right. Stuff from the cameras, and stuff, upstairs in the office. Because I saw. It was like. Guy.
Yeah. He was. So I can see the carpet. On second floor. So hot, whatever. I was like.
Oh, fries.
Well, he. I was talking to John. Why? You're actually. I can't. No. I'm. Real loud.
And. He was. Down. The execution. So. Hurt. Uh.
We're. We need to hear the. We can't. We're. So.
Sorry.
Here. They. Great. Good. I said. And also. Here.
That's why I need to. Rock. Yeah, that would make this. That would be.
So that we're not. For.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean.
He's. I'm trying. I'm. Hey, you're not. Well, this is. I enjoy that. Yeah.
Happened to. You. And well, did your life. On air. I'd be like, he's got me.
Take my calls.
So. We find this. Of course. No. We're. Did you? You don't have. That's. The. I'm. I'm. So. Yeah. Wine.
Very. That's.
Yes. Yes. That's.
Strong.
Yeah. Nobody's. It's. We're. So. That's. Yeah. That's. Very. Drop. Yeah. Right. Seven minutes. Yeah. Yeah. So. Watch. In all. Minutes. Hey. Yeah. That's. And we're. And.
Are you in. Four?
No. Right. Really. So. No. So. Yeah. We're. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Conversation.
It's like it's just that. Yeah. You're.
Ready.
So. Yeah. Yeah. I shouldn't. Twenty-nine. We're not gonna.
Oh, yeah. No, we can. I said, make sense. Well. You said. Because. Well, you know, I. I came. For the other. Nice. So.
I'm.
Yeah.
They will give you. Oh, man. And it's. Now.
I told you. It's.
When that's. You.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
This was the only one. For. We're. From. Yeah. And. Yeah. Down. Two. Three. Yes. You know. You got one. Trying to. Try. Sure. It was. Now he's. I'm. So.
I was. The. I was. I think. Yeah. Yeah. So. Just. I'm. That's. I'm. So. This is. I'm. So. It's. Now. Yeah. Now. The. We do a lot of. It's.
I was thinking about. The. I was. I was.
Yeah. I would. Work. My. You know. But. Now he's. He's. I know. You. I know. It's. That was. And. So. 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 I'm. So. 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 See. I'm. Are you here? So. Be. Yeah. I guess. You. We're. Yeah. This was. It was. It's. They. Trump. No. They.
Your money? What are you trying to?
Do you like? Break down. Your money? Yeah.
Well. It's. I'm. That's. Yeah. It's. Turn. Lost. Yeah. So. All that. There. Yeah. Everybody doesn't have. Money.
You guys.
So I'm. Like. I said, you know what? We think this. So. I say. You guys. Keep your. Go. Yeah. And. So. So make sure you can redive that. Each. Back. For.
Yeah, it's right here. If everybody can find their seats, please, for, uh, public. We're in the public hearing. The.
Yeah. Just. Just listen.
Um. Anything. Yeah.
As a. Well. It's okay, fine.
Yeah. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us here tonight for the, uh, public hearing of the budget committee. Our annual public here. Everybody here. Good. Um. So first, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Public hearing to order at, uh, running a little behind here at six oh two P M. So I'm just gonna go over a few things and then, um, we'll have Adam take over from there and I'll explain a little bit what's going on in the meeting. Uh, everybody should have, um, at the front table there, we have a handout for tonight's meeting. It has all the information that you need for the, um, for the topic of discussion tonight. Um, in this handout, you'll find. In the front has a table of contents to kind of help you guide through the, uh, through the process. Through the handout. Um, we've included this year, um, zoning amendments. We're gonna go over those. We have the planning board members here that will, um, be able to answer some questions on zoning amendments. There's quite a few this year and, um, it seemed to be a lot of questions at their public hearing, so we have those in here. Um, the warrant begins on, uh, on page five. We'll be going over that in detail. We'll be reading that entirely. Um, and then the informational stuff starts on page fourteen. Uh, we have a detailed budget that lays out, um, year over year, um, budget expenses and, uh, line by line. So towards the back, we have, um, on page twenty-seven, we have some health care graphs, um, kind of showing some historicals uh, over the last five years. It gives you, um, what the budget was in blue and, and what the expenditures were in orange. Um, I broke, I broke it down into the major departments, uh, some of the smaller departments that have, you know, maybe five hundred dollars or something like that in it. Or didn't make the, the graph because we don't need to waste the paper. Um, and in the end, we have, uh, our bond payment schedule that is down to, um, last few years on a couple of bonds and our broadband bond that runs out through till, uh, twenty forty-one. And then in the end, we have glossary terms. This is, if anybody has any questions on some of the terminology we use over the course of the evening, uh, you'll find that in the back in the glossary of terms. I think we cover most everything that, that we, we kind of utter up here and think nothing of it when the public doesn't know what the heck we're talking about, so. Um, so that's the handout. The, uh, so tonight, the way we normally do this is Adam will be reading off the budget. Um, we'll be starting tonight, as I said, with the, um, zoning amendments. And we're gonna pause after each zoning amendment. I'll ask if there's, or after each, um, each section of the budget and warrant and the zoning amendments, um, to see if there's any questions and we can, we can address questions as we go along. On the purpose of the hearing is to discuss questions and input from the public regarding the warrant and the budget. And tonight it's gonna be the, um, zoning amendments as well. Um, some items discussed can be added or removed in the business meeting following the hearing, um, by the select board and or the budget committee, uh, based on those discussions. Um, items that cannot be changed, um, until town meeting would be any valid items, including zoning amendments, all petition warrant articles, and anything that was not discussed or presented by the budget committee during the public hearing. Um, the rules for tonight's meeting are, um, the, the budget, this is a budget committee meeting, so the budget committee chair is in charge. That's me. Um, if you have a question, raise your hand and you'll be recognized by me. I ask that, um, everybody use the mic. We can either pass it around or come up to it, whatever's more convenient for the audience. Um, but please stand regardless of whether you're at the mic or receiving the mic in hand and state your name, street and town where you live. Um, there'll be one person at a time. We'll be not doing, won't be doing any cross debate. Um, all questions are to be directed to me, the chair. Um, we're gonna avoid any repeat questions. If it's been asked, it's been asked and answered, you'll have to, um, address it in more detail at that town meeting if you're, if you're not satisfied with the answer. Um, and we'll keep the dialogue civil and respectful. Uh, most of us here are neighbors and live in the community together and we're all pulling on the same end of the rope, even though it may not feel like we are at the same times, so. With that said, I will turn it over to Adam and he will begin with the, um, with the notice of public hearing. No? Notice of. Notice of public hearing. In accordance with New Hampshire revised statutes and stated thirty-two colon five, notice is hereby given to all residents of Troy, New Hampshire that a public hearing for the purpose of gathering public input on proposed twenty twenty-five warrant articles, including the twenty twenty-five proposed operating budget for the town of Troy will be held on Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Samuel Lee Paul Community Center, sixty-one South Street. In case of severe weather conditions, should the town postpone the public hearing, it will be held on Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M at the Samuel Lee Paul Community Center, sixty-one South Street. Now we're on page two. To the inhabitants of the town of Troy and the county of Chester and the state of New Hampshire, qualified to vote in town affairs. You are hereby notified to meet at the Samuel Lee Paul Community Center on Tuesday, the eleventh of March, twenty twenty-five at ten A M for balloting upon matters specified in Article one through ten listed below. And you are hereby further noticed, notified to meet at Troy Elementary School on Wednesday, the twelfth of March, twenty twenty-five at seven P M for consideration of all other articles contained in the warrant. Article one, election of officers. Selectmen, three years, vote for one. Treasurer, three years, vote for one. Moderator, one year, vote for one. Library trustee, three years, vote for one. Cemetery trustee, three years, vote for one. Cemetery trustee, one year, vote for one. Trustee of the trust funds, three years, vote for one. First deputy fire chief, three years, vote for one. Water and sewer commission, five years, vote for one. Planning board, three years, vote for two. Zoning board of adjustment, three years, vote for two. Budget committee, three years, vote for three. Article two. Are you in favor of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board for the Troy zoning ordinance to amend Article twelve F, solar energy systems as follows? One, add the word authorization following F, solar energy systems. Two, amend four B, general standards as follows. B, every facility shall have only one entry point from an approved class five or better right of way, unless approved approval has been granted by the select board. Three, amend F six waivers as follows. Six waivers. Removing all that. The board may, and changing it to the board may waive or modify any part of these regulations or impose reasonable conditions if it believes that the specific circumstances of the proposal justify such action and that the waiver aligns with the spirit and intent of these regulations. Note on this is the purpose of this amendment is to improve the process of reviewing solar system applications and provide the planning board and applicants with clearer standards. We'll take any questions or comments on that one? Okay. Article three, are you in favor of amendment number two as proposed by the planning board for the Troy zoning ordinance to amend Article twenty-one, definitions as follows? To delete definitions numbered number four, accessory solar energy system, number sixteen, community solar energy system, and number seventeen, commercial scale solar energy system, and renumber Article twenty-one accordingly. Purpose of this amendment is to eliminate definitions that are redundant since they are included in definition number forty-nine, solar energy systems. Any questions on that one? Okay. Article four, are you in favor of amendment number three as proposed by the planning board for the Troy zoning ordinance to amend the town of Troy flood plain development ordinance by updating several definitions and clarifying the permitting process? Purpose of this amendment is to comply with updated federal regulations for flood plain management. Questions? Article five, are you in favor of amendment number four as proposed by the planning board for the Troy manufactured housing park ordinance to delete paragraph eight of section six as follows? The purpose of this amendment is to comply with state legislation that requires reasonable and realistic opportunities for expansion of existing manufactured home parks. RSA six seventy-four colon thirty-two went into effect in July of twenty twenty-four. Questions on this one?
All right, Scott, we'll have five more seats. Is this in my listing right here? Everything you're reading?
It should be, yeah. On page three.
On three? On three? Thank you.
Find it.
Yep.
Article six. Are you in favor of amendment number five as proposed by the planning board for the Troy zoning ordinance to amend Article three? General provisions, paragraph one, as follows. One, manufactured housing is permitted only in manufactured housing parks or in subdivisions created specifically for manufactured housing in the rural district, subject to the provisions of the Troy manufactured housing park ordinances and the Troy subdivision and or site plan review regulations as applicable. Oh, excuse me. Let me read that again, since I screwed it up. Manufactured housing is permitted in manufactured housing parks or in subdivisions created specifically for manufactured housing in the rural district, subject to the provisions of the Troy manufactured housing park ordinance and the Troy subdivision and or site plan review regulations as applicable. Any questions? Article seven. Are you in favor of amendment number six as proposed by the planning board for the Troy zoning ordinance to amend Article three, general provisions, paragraph one, as follows? One, manufactured housing is permitted on individual lots in the rural district. The purpose of amendment number five and six is to comply with state legislation that requires reasonable and realistic opportunities for manufactured housing either in subdivisions or parks or on individual lots or both. RSA six seventy-four colon thirty-two. Any questions? Article eight. Are you in favor of amendment number seven as proposed by the planning board for the Troy manufactured housing park ordinance to amend section four, paragraph A, as follows? A, lot and yard requirements. One, the minimum lot size for a new manufactured housing park shall be ten acres. Two, in a new manufactured housing park, the maximum lot coverage of the parcel by buildings and infrastructure shall be thirty-five percent. The purpose of this amendment is to provide reasonable standards for new parks which cannot be applied to existing parks. Questions? Article nine. Are you in favor of amendment number eight submitted by citizens petition to amend Article twelve solar energy systems to remove the ability of the planning board to waive provisions of the ordinance? The planning board does not recommend this amendment. Questions? Article ten. Are you in favor of amendment number nine submitted by the select board to change the zoning designation of tax map thirteen, lot two, from the light industrial district to the highway business district? The planning board recommends this amendment. No questions? Article eleven, operating budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, and I adjusted this based on the earlier discussion, three billion four hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars for general government operations, January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. Majority vote is required.
So just a clarification there, we did make some minor adjustments in the business meeting prior to the public hearing. Adam is going to read those off as as newly amended, so you'll notice that number that he just wrote off is slightly different from the one you see on your handout. And there's a couple more that are within the budget that have the same technical adjustment.
Another one's? Three billion four hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven. And for any department where the select board and budget committee agree, I'm not going to read any of this. Selectmen's office. Recommendations, three hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Yep, just put your hand up if you have a question after he reads one of the lines. And I'll make sure I stop him in time to get you up here and answer your questions.
Town clerk, tax collector's office. One hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Elections and registration. Five thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. Auditors for town books, twenty-five thousand dollars. Historical society, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Planning board, six thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Zoning board of adjustment, one thousand seven hundred and four dollars. Kimball Hall, eleven thousand six dollars. Town hall building, forty-two thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. Cheshire Railroad Depot, nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Regional associations, four thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars. Other general government, twenty thousand dollars. Police department, five hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars. Police revenue offset, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Ambulance service, two hundred and forty-two thousand twenty-one dollars.
Yeah, hi, Scott, we all. So how do these compare to twenty twenty-three? One hundred and twenty-one thousand seven sixty-six?
Is our mic on there?
One hundred one hundred and twenty-one thousand seven sixty-six, that's doubled. Doubled the amount?
What's our increase on this, guys? Do you have it on you? Somebody follow the line here on the individual.
He's going to twenty twenty-three, too.
Page thirty-five, it's the graph you did.
Well, it's still about buck the deal, though. It's only twenty twenty-four, I mean, I'm max, okay?
So current, the twenty twenty-four budget was two hundred and three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
We got doubled in two years, you know, I mean, I mean, that's that's overspending.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let, I'll let.
One of the things that problems I've got to move is spending.
Yep, I'll let Mark respond to the question on that. I do have, I do know one thing that came up during budget hearing. Our, during budget meetings, we discussed on this was the extension from just weekdays of coverage to weekends of coverage as well, so, but I can let Mark speak to your question.
Mark, I'm June one ninety-seven South Main Street. So the budget went up this year due to the fact of trying to give pay raises because all the other ambulance services are way higher than we are. We've already lost four individuals, which makes it tough to cover all the shifts. So we added that and we added a twenty-five dollar weekend stipend to get people to work weekends as well.
So mostly payroll, Mark, because I would check.
Mostly all payroll.
Yep. What is the, what is the alternative? I know that came up in our discussions as to you know, if we didn't have the service and we weren't doing this, what is our alternative with, say, Cheshire County?
Then you have to contract the Cheshire County to price them.
Right, and I know you guys had toyed around with some of those numbers earlier on and they were.
That was two, two, three years ago.
Right, they were three hundred back then wasn't that a service for us?
Went up from one year to the next year, kept increasing.
Yeah.
Should I do the removal of the five thousand right now?
Yeah.
That line item for, on one oh two on the payroll line item, I want to take five thousand dollars off that line item, but we'll adjust a couple others as well. Because where we're, between the two towns, Troy agreed at first to pay fifty dollars on the weekend stipend. Pittsburgh only paid twenty-five, so we're going to go with the twenty-five, which would be the reduce of the five thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, and we'll address that in the meeting afterwards and adjust the budget accordingly. Any additional line items he's referring to is the payroll liabilities that are associated to that five thousand dollars, Scott?
Why don't I have access to the twenty twenty-four numbers?
You got them in here, they're, so when you get to, can somebody scroll into the page that the analyst is on, please?
Oh, okay, thank you. Kind of hard to follow along, thank you.
You find it all right, Scott?
Yeah, I find it.
Okay. Okay, we good?
All right. Emergency services building, fourteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Fire department, one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Forest fire suppression, three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Building inspector, ten thousand dollars. Emergency management, four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Highway department, four hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Thanks for recording. Street lighting, fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer station recycling, one hundred ninety-five thousand fifty-nine dollars. Animal control, three thousand three hundred and forty dollars. Welfare, general assistance, thirty-eight thousand dollars. Town common, ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. War Memorial Recreation, thirty-four thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Recreation program, sixty-five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. Library, one hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Patriotic purposes, eight hundred dollars. Industrial development, one dollar. Conservation commission, two thousand two hundred and five dollars. Tax anticipation note interest, forty thousand dollars. Water sewer department, six hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yep.
Two went up, one went down, five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, so the math of top should be a little higher. The math of top, you said it went to three million four hundred and eight?
Eight.
Thousand?
Eighteen. Or maybe, or maybe.
So it should have gone.
It went down to five thousand and then up, six hundred, eight hundred and eighty.
Okay.
Adam was right.
Article twelve. Sewer plant upgrade bond payment. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars for the annual bond payment for sewer plant upgrades completed in two thousand and seven. The payment is broken down by the principal amount of seventy-five thousand ninety-eight dollars and interest amount of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation.
Scott, we'll apply more speed. Why, why are we paying for a bond that bought that in twenty twenty?
Can you say that again, Scott?
Why are we paying for a bond that bought that? Bond payment, it says, right?
It was a twenty-year bond that started in twenty, so. Yeah, if you look in your packet, I actually have the bond payment schedule.
And you want this from taxation?
So this is paid for by, there's, this particular bond has about twenty-five thousand dollars in forgiveness that comes from the state, so that pays down that number, the eighty-two thousand dollar number. And then we pay towards this out of the water sewer budget, thirty-eight thousand dollars. So the total that comes from taxation is well, it's fifty-five between the water, the sewer bond payment and the water bond payment. About fifty-five thousand change.
Okay, well, I, I just might as well say it while I'm up here. My biggest concern, okay, is the overall budget, and I know we need to get there. But I know that my president plans on lowering our taxes later this year, okay? So I will know that the town is going to do a lower my taxes by five hundred dollars in percent points.
Does the select board want to entertain that question?
So what would you like us to cut? Cut the fire department, cut the police department, cut the road department?
That's sarcastic, that's sarcastic.
No, it's not, I'm honestly being honest, we can't.
But he plans to lower our taxes, he plans to lower the overall taxes in this country. So if this town is not on board with that, then we're not going to reach that plateau, our taxes are going to go up. And I see a lot of overspending, I see a ton of overspending in the budget this year. It's outrageous, as far as I'm concerned.
So so here's the problem, I don't know what your personal tax bill is. It's probably not really relevant. The to give it across-the-board tax cut to every property owner of five hundred dollars, well, a wonderful goal and we would all appreciate it, is not very realistic. There are certain essential services that we have to provide. We have significant revenue offsets to some of these things. Ben just explained to you how the budget works, so we have to raise and appropriate this money. But if you don't raise and appropriate this money, you can't pay the bond and then you have an even greater problem. So there are some user fees that are transferred around. At the end of the day, the, one of the things that happens is when the state says it's going to cut its revenue or its funding or its taxes, or the feds are going to cut their, you have no idea, that changes like every afternoon, three hours. You know, those, we, we still are legally required to do certain things. And beyond that, prudence requires that we do certain things. So prudence requires that we have a police department. Prudence requires that we have a fire department. Prudence requires that we have an emergency services. The law requires that we fund a school system. So when you strip all of those expenses out and if you look at your tax bill, the biggest part of your tax bill doesn't come from the town of Troy. If you reduce, if, if we, if we somehow magically reduce the operating budget from, from the town of Troy to a dollar and everybody worked for free and nobody bought anything and we turned the lights off here, you're still not, probably, probably still not going to get that five hundred dollar reduction you're looking for. So the, the best, the best that we've been able to do is run, is take our surpluses and pay them back to the tax holders and hold the rate. When you look at the rate in Troy, which is eighteen, what is it? Eighteen fifty-nine, something?
Yeah.
Eighteen sixty-four? And then you look at the People's Republic of Keene at thirty-three dollars per thousand. We're really in the middle of the pack for other towns in the area. You're not going to be able to achieve the kind of taxes that they have in Roxbury or Surrey where the tax rate's eleven dollars per thousand because they have twenty-two schoolchildren and those, absolutely no recognizable services whatsoever, including the police or fire department. So we have a town of two thousand people, we have to provide basic services, unfortunately, we don't have any industrial base, so I, I I think, I think the best answer that we can give you as a group, and I guess I'm kind of speaking for a group, is we've gone through these numbers sixteen ways from Sunday, Scott, and you could come to all those budget committee meetings and we go right down into the last thirty-two dollars on some of these bills. And the selectmen, for the last six or eight years, whatever however long I've been here, we've returned a surplus every year. So we're not spending money that we don't have to. And we, and we still want to get some, there are some things that simply make the community better. You know, we could save sixty-five thousand dollars and close this building. Do you really want to do that? I don't think so.
No.
I think the, I think the point is well made, though, that, you know, when you look at page twenty-seven, which outlines the the overall budget versus expenditures from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, that, that graph is quite alarming, I, I don't disagree with you, Scott, at all, that, that is, I look at that and go, when does this stop? You know, as you look at twenty twenty being, you know, we're up seventy-five percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five on our overall budget. And there's a lot of factors that drive that. But, but yeah, I, I do believe that, that this year, you know, as much as we do go line by line through the budget, I, I think in the coming season, we should. I, I think in the coming season, we should, you know, we should try to sharpen a pencil a little bit here and see what, see what else we can do to, um, kind of trim down. The kind of number you're talking about for five hundred dollars a household is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this budget in, um,
Well, I meant me, I meant me.
No, no, I mean, if we wanted to do it by household, it would be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it. Just to give some perspective as to what kind of money that would take to get that, you know, to happen at your household, and it would, it'd be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of this budget, which is, you know, uh, fifteen percenters, twelve percent, somewhere around there, so it's a, it's a big cost, so it's just tough to me, so. Uh, but I do, I, I hear what you're saying, that, that the, the increases are, are pretty staggering, for sure. Uh, I know that COVID played a, a role in some of this stuff, and we kind of have a downstream effect here in New England, where prices go up everywhere else, like almost immediately, and we kind of feel the ripple effect downstream, so we don't see it right away, but we see it further down the road, so I'm sure you see it in your grocery budget and everywhere else, so.
Everybody can hear me from here, right?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make it clear that I, I've loved, you know, recording your guys' meetings. I appreciate what everyone does in this town, you guys know that. But, at the end of the day, you know, someone's got to, someone's got to call, call it out, you know what I mean? So.
Yep, we appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay. Article thirteen, Water Systems Improvement Bond Payment. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars for the annual bond payment for water, water system improvements completed in twenty-ten. The payment is broken down by a principal amount of thirty-one thousand fifty-eight dollars and interest amount of four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article fourteen, Broadband Bond Payment. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars for the annual bond payment for the broadband project completed in twenty-twenty-one. The payment is broken down by the principal amount of ten thousand dollars and interest amount of four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. The funds that come from the franchise agreement with Consolidated Communications Incorporated, no money to be raised from taxation, majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article fifteen, Capital Reserve Fund Deposits. And this one was adjusted at the earlier meeting. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars to deposit into the capital reserve funds as specified. Reassessment, twenty-two thousand dollars. Fire Department, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Highway Department, twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Highway and Streets, fifty-five thousand dollars. Police Department, twenty-two thousand dollars, for a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. So, for the, um, for this article and the one following this, if, if you weren't here for the, uh, the meeting earlier, we, uh, we actually got a recommendation from the CIP Committee. Uh, we first saw the numbers tonight, so we decided to table it until next year of an increase of, of this particular warrant article by a considerable amount to, uh, try to catch us up with where we are as, as far as our, our savings accounts for our capital needs in the future. Um, so, having read that, we decided to add at least a little bit this year, and certainly are going to be looking at adding, um, that much more, if not more, um, next year, based on the CIP recommendation, so if there's any questions, I'll take them.
Well, yeah, hi, Scott, we'll find more street, the only question I had is that says one forty, and you're saying one fifty-four.
Yeah, he's just reading off what we decided to change in the meeting prior to this. Um, these documents will be updated accordingly.
So it's fifteen thousand dollars more?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just more spending?
Yeah, it is, and the CIP recommendation was, um, it's in there right handy. So what the CIP did was looked at all of the equipment from each of the departments, and I think the three main ones were the Fire Department, Police Department, and Highway Department. And they added end-of-life schedules for those pieces of equipment, what it would cost to replace them, added an escalator in there for inflation and all of that, and they came up with a number for, um, hold on just a second, someone's grabbing, we got it right here. So, for instance, on the Police Department, uh, we currently put in, uh, twenty thousand dollars, the CIP recommended, based on the math, in order to keep our equipment up to date, was forty-five thousand dollars annually. So, these are the, these are the numbers we decided to table, so we, we bumped it up a little bit just to kind of work our way towards these numbers, but the numbers that were recommended by CIP, we did table. Um, on the Fire Department, we currently, uh, have twenty-five thousand dollars in our, um, putting into the savings account each year, and the recommendation is one hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-three annually. That's just to get us to that point of the one point five million dollar piece of equipment that we may need somewhere, somewhere down the road, so. Um, Highway Department currently is at, uh, twenty-five thousand, it's actually twenty-seven thousand five hundred that we decided on tonight. Um, the CIP recommendation on that, again, based on the math and the equipment that we have, sixty-four thousand, uh, one hundred and twelve dollars, so. We've got to ease our way into these numbers, they're not, that's not something we were, we were willing to do tonight, but we, we saw that we needed to do something, so. Hopefully that answers your question. Article sixteen, Expendable Trust Fund Deposits. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars to deposit into the expendable trust funds as specified. Town Buildings and Repairs, twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Demolition, Repair of Buildings, eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Samuel E. Paul War Memorial, one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Gay Kimball Library, five thousand five hundred dollars. Computer Technology, five thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article seventeen, Cemetery Operating Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for the care of cemeteries and authorize the withdrawal of sixty-two thousand one hundred and five dollars from the Cemetery Maintenance Expendable Trust and the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Funds. The balance of one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to be raised from general taxation, majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. So because this question comes up every year, um, the reason why the one thousand six hundred and twenty-five is raised from taxation is because the RSAs don't allow, um, the trustees to be paid out of the Cemetery Maintenance and/or, um, Perpetual Care Funds, so. That's why it's the sixteen twenty-five system that represents the, um, the cemetery trustees in, um, heck. Any other questions? Article eighteen, Cemetery Maintenance Trust and Perpetual Care Trust. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand two hundred dollars to be placed in the following accounts with said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. Four hundred and eighty dollars to go into the Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, and seven hundred and twenty dollars to go into the Cemetery Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article nineteen, Roads and Streets. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-four thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for the purpose of purchasing materials towards future road rebuild projects. The funds are to be raised from Highway Block Grant twenty-twenty-five estimated of forty-four thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Should the entire estimated block grant not be received, the remainder is to be raised from, from taxation. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation.
Scott, we'll find more street, you're going to feel like, you know, the budget isn't high enough as it is that we're going to give them money through tax, more money through taxation?
Could you ask that again, Scott? I'm not sure what you're referring to.
This is for the roads, right? The road department?
So this is, uh, block grant money that comes in from the state, um, based on the amount of roads that we have. They have a calculation that they do to, um, to offer money to all towns. Our calculation turns out to be forty-four eight oh eights for the year, and it has to be used for, um, what's indicated in this article. So for roads and maintenance of roads. So it's, it's, um, it's state funding that comes in.
I just got to say, I think all these small things add up to that big number that we were talking about, you know? All these two thousand, five thousand, six thousand, that, that I'm not seeing here, that gets tossed up, that, that is going to add up to the overspending and end up being a budget bust sooner than later.
I don't understand, this is money that's coming in, not out. So it's not, this is not, the only part that will be raised from taxes on this one will be if they, if the state doesn't send us the forty-four thousand dollars. This is money coming into the town for the roads specifically, from the state, not from our taxes.
Oh, it's said taxation?
Right, it said if the money doesn't come from the state, the forty-four thousand eight oh eight, so they don't send that check on time, then that little bit will come out the difference. They send, I think it's fourth check a year, so if that fourth check doesn't make it in within the, the twenty-twenty-five budget, we have to cover that little bit, and then that money will come back in, and it goes right into the, the coffers, which get re, which lower everyone's taxes later on.
If you don't raise and appropriate this money, you can't take the money from the state, and you still have to fix the roads. So this is forty-four thousand dollars, uh, state money against our roads. In the grand scheme of things, yes, it's not, they're, the government's money, and it's really our money, but in terms of your tax bill on your house, accepting this forty-four thousand dollars serves to lower your tax burden in the town of Troy.
Okay, thanks for explaining that, I didn't know that, thank you.
Thank you. Article twenty, Transfer Station Bags. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars to purchase transfer station bags and to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the Transfer Station Recycling Center Special Revenue Fund to offset this expense. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation.
This is through taxation, again?
It's, it's from, uh, the, a special revenue fund that we already have. When you pay for stuff down to dump, the money goes into a separate checking account, and this comes out of that checking account by the bags.
So any taxation?
You just have to authorize the order.
Yeah, in order to spend any money, unless the, unless there's authorization for that particular money, um, the, unless there's an authorization for that most particular funds that's designated by town meeting to, um, individual boards within the town to spend between town meeting, it has to be put into these articles like this, and you have to raise and appropriate it regardless of where it's coming from. If it's coming from the state, or if it's coming out of a fund that, that, um, is generated through fees at the dump like this one is, you always have to raise that money so that you then can appropriate that money.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
For sure. Article twenty-one, Computer Technology Expendable Trust Fund. To see if the town will change the purpose of the Computer Technology Expendable Trust Fund purpose, let me get that to you. To see if the town will change the purpose of the Computer Technology Expendable Trust Fund purpose as created through Article six of the two thousand and eleven Town Meeting Warrant, to be for the purpose of replacing and maintaining town computer equipment and software, and further name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from this fund. Majority vote required, and the Board of Selectmen recommend this article. Article twenty-two, Ballot Counting. To see if the town will approve the use of a ballot counting device, majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this article. Article twenty-three, Ballot Counting Device. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate seven thousand five hundred dollars to purchase a ballot counting device. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommend this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. If Article twenty-two fails, this article is null and void.
I think with regard to this particular article, I, I think with regard to this particular article, there's two things that, that aren't immediately apparent from the article that the public should know. First off, the proposed device is not connected to the internet. It simply is a machine to count the votes here. And the second item is, we will be, if we spend the seventy-five hundred dollars, the state reimburses, how much, Curtis? The state of the answer pays for thirty-five hundred, and so it's really a net cost for the equipment of four thousand dollars to the town.
I'd also like to add, and, uh, for those of you that never helped vote, or when you come in to vote, help count all the ballots, this will help out exponentially. It's, it's very time-consuming, sometimes we don't get out of here until one, two, or three o'clock in the morning, so I recommend that everyone really, personally, listen to this, because it's about all the volunteers that help.
Uh, Curtis, from your experience, the, um, how quickly does the screw ballot get counted? Because they use a machine, in compared to our ballot on those, on those nights?
It's, theirs is usually under an hour. Their numbers are already on the machine, it says that what the numbers are, and all the paperwork, and all we have to do is match it up. So we're just confirming it, and it's under an hour just to confirm it, so I'm not, for us to do it, it'd be, this would make everything a lot quicker, and everybody would get the results right away, or within, within an hour, and my, my, Mike LeClerk helped, uh, helped count with me this last time and everything, and he can attest that, everything goes a lot smoother when you have a machine and everything.
Thank you. Scott?
Kyle Smith, South Metro, is there any more costing machine, like maintenance? Just so you know, the future, or is it just a single-time cost?
No, there's ongoing costs. Uh, Curtis, you know the cost, I, I don't want to get them wrong.
Yeah, so every year, it's a five hundred dollar maintenance fee, and then after that, it's for every, um, for every election, sorry, uh, it's another five hundred dollars to program the tablet and machine, so it all costs to each other. So the machine comes with a computer and a printer, so everything can talk to each other, it's two phone drives, and two cards, the moderator will get it and the town clerk will get it, and everything is very secure. I talked to, uh, the guys that were promoting these during the conference. Uh, they're very secure, and it'll already update it to the most current, uh, twenty-twenty-six regulations that they have to meet by twenty-twenty-six. So if there's four elections, it's going to be two thousand dollars plus the five hundred dollars from the yearly maintenance, so twenty-five hundred dollars in cost. But it'll help count all the ballots, except for if there is a recount, that is all they're making.
Is the plan divided this, this year?
The plan is divided this year, but not use it for the other marketing, it won't be used until the following week.
See, no, I'm putting in the budget for that, for the coverage.
That's correct, that's what we're here, just to purchase it and authorize the town to actually do that.
The moderator's job just looks, started looking, looking good, yeah.
Everybody hear that all right? Okay. Article twenty-four, Town Clerk Tax Collector Compensation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand forty dollars for the purpose of providing the town clerk tax collector with a three percent increase on April first, twenty-twenty-five. This amount includes any payroll-related expenses. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article twenty-five, Cemetery Trustees and Treasurer Stipend Increase. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars to increase the cemetery trustee's stipend from one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per year, and to increase the treasurer's stipend one thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars from seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars to eight thousand five hundred dollars. Majority vote required. The Board of Selectmen recommends this appropriation. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. Article twenty-six, Support for Public Services. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight... To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars to support public services as specified. Meals on Wheels, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Home, healthcare and hospice, two thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. Southwestern Community Services, two thousand five hundred dollars. Monadnoc Child Advocacy Center, two thousand five hundred dollars. The Community Kitchen, three thousand dollars. Community Volunteer Transportation, one thousand five hundred dollars. CASA, one thousand five hundred dollars. Monadnoc Family Services, two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. MCVP Crisis and Prevention, two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, totaling eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommend this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article twenty-seven, Holman and West Hill Road. To see if the town will vote to discontinue a triangular piece of land believed to be a segment of West Hill Road that was abandoned after West Hill Road was realigned to its present location, that crosses the northeast corner of map twenty-four, lot twelve, and is depicted on plan titled Boundary Survey, Survey by Paquin Land Surveyors LLC. Said plan to be recorded by Robert and Lynn Smith if this article passes. Nothing herein shall change the status of West Hill Road as it is presently used and configured. Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommend this article. Article twenty-eight, Town Hall Streams. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand two hundred dollars for the purpose of installing cameras and microphones in the town hall meeting rooms, the Gay Kimball Library Meeting Room and the Water Sewer Building at Dort Street to livestream public meetings of the town's boards, committees and commissions. This will cover the first annual subscription and the installation of cameras and microphones at said locations. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommend this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation.
Yeah, Scott, we have a five more street. I just think it's another thing, it's another small item that adds up to a bigger budget. You know, we got volunteers for that. I do it.
Understood? Any other questions or comments? Article twenty-nine, Water and Sewer Department Vehicle. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term lease purchase agreement in an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars payable over a term of sixty monthly payments or five annual payments for the purpose of purchasing a work truck and all necessary equipment for the operational needs of the Water and Sewer Department. And to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an estate clause. Payments to be made from the Water and Sewer Project Accounts and for Water Sewer Expendable Trust Fund. Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. So for water commissioners that are here tonight, that's changed a little since the last time you saw it. The DIA required that we put the first payment in there. They actually corrected that because otherwise you'd have to raise and appropriate the entire sixty-five thousand in the first year when you don't need to. So it's just an accounting function. I put that in there as a, um, one-fifth of the sixty-five thousand dollars at eight percent. So if we can't do better than that, we're doing something wrong. So we don't have to spend the full fifteen, eight fifteen, we just have to have enough in there appropriated to cover our first payment. That's where that number came from. Article thirty, fire hydrants. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of replacing five fire hydrants within the water district. Funds to be raised by general taxation. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-one, Fire Department Garage Bay Doors. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars for the purchase of three new garage doors at the Troy Fire Department and to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the town buildings maintenance expendable trust fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-two, library sprinkler system. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars to repair and replace the sprinkler system components as needed within the Gay Kimball Library and to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the town buildings and repair expendable trust fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-three, LED streetlight conversion lease. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a six-year lease agreement for RSA thirty-three colon seven dash E in the total amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars for the purpose of leasing LED streetlights. And to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. It is the intention of the board to fund all subsequent years of the lease from the streetlights line item of the annual operating budget account, which is funded annually in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. The operational cost of the lights and the lease payments will be paid out of the streetlights line item in the streetlights account of the operating budget. The lease agreement contains a non-appropriation clause. Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-four, Police Department Radios. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars to purchase and upgrade the radios within the department cruisers in order to work with the county's new dispatch radio system and to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the Police Department Capital Reserve Fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommend this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-five, Closed Landfill Maintenance Requirements. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars for the rule of the vegetation around the perimeter of the landfill. The work needed to bring the swales up to state requirements and to replace the monitoring well cap. And to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the Transfer Station Recycling Center Special Revenue Fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. No questions, okay? Article thirty-six, Transfer Station Balder. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to purchase a new balder for the transfer station and to authorize the withdrawal of the same from the Transfer Station Recycling Center Special Revenue Fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-seven, Highway Departments and Transfer Station Lawnmower. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new zero-turn lawnmower for the Highway Department and Transfer Station. And to see if the town will vote to authorize the withdrawal of six thousand five hundred dollars from the Highway Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund and six thousand five hundred dollars from the Transfer Station Recycling Center Equipment Special Revenue Fund. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this appropriation, the budget committee recommends this appropriation. Article thirty-eight, Modify Elderly Exemptions. Shall the town modify the provisions of RSA seventy-two colon thirty-nine dash A for elderly exemptions and property tax in the town of Troy? Based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person sixty-five years of age up to seventy-four years, thirty thousand dollars. For a person seventy-five years of age up to seventy-nine years, sixty thousand dollars. For a person eighty years of age or older, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To qualify, the person must have been a Deanshur resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than thirty thousand dollars or if married, a combined net income of less than forty-five thousand dollars. And own net assets not in excess of eighty thousand dollars, excluding the value of the person's residence. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommend this article. Article thirty-nine, Modify Surviving Spouse Credit. Shall the town modify the surviving spouse credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two colon twenty-nine dash A for a tax credit of one thousand eight hundred dollars per year to two thousand dollars? Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommend this article. Article forty, Modify Veterans Tax Credit. Shall the town modify the standard and optional veterans tax credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two colon twenty-eight two from its current tax credit of five hundred dollars per year to seven hundred and fifty dollars? Majority vote required, the board of selectmen recommends this article. Article forty-one, Combat Veteran. Shall the town adopt the provisions of RSA seventy-two colon twenty-eight dash C for an optional tax credit of up to five hundred dollars for combat service veterans on residential property? Majority vote required. The board of selectmen recommends this article. Article forty-two, Building Permits on Class Six Highways Petition Warrant Article. To see if the town will vote to instruct the board of selectmen pursuant to RSA six seventy-four colon forty-one to adopt a policy for the issuance of building permits on class six highways that addresses all the requirements of RSA six seventy-four colon forty-one. And restricts the issuance of a building permit for any non-residential project or expansion thereof on a class six highway without a vote from the legislative body at the annual town meeting or a special town meeting called pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon five and our thirty-one colon five dash B. Majority vote required. The board of selectmen does not recommend this article.
Scotty?
That was, um, the recommendation was added at the meeting prior to the public hearing just to make that point. Scotty, you had a question?
So the selectmen didn't recommend it?
Yeah, that's what they decided prior to the meeting.
Also, they decided to recommend it?
No, they decided to not recommend.
And is there a reason for that?
I'll let them respond to that.
What was the question to why you're not writing that down? Basically, because there is no history. We have very, the selectmen are hesitant to give up any or further restricted any options that we may have in terms of issuing building permits on class six roads. We are permitted under the law to issue building permits under class six roads. And we have not issued a building permit on a class six road in decades. So it's not a problem, in our opinion.
Thank you, Dick.
Article forty-three, Water and Sewer Commission Petition Warrant Article. Shall the town vote to transfer all powers and duties of the water commissioners granted by town meeting vote of nineteen fifteen, Article fifteen, back to the Troy Board of Selectmen? The vote of nineteen fifteen allowed the town to place the direction of said waterworks in a board of water commissioners for a more convenient management of said waterworks. The Water and Sewer Commission has a long history of failure evidenced by the taxpayers paying perpetual bonds on system improvements that do not outlast said payments. Taxpayers who do not enjoy the benefits of the system pay for the lion's share of system costs due to the long history of mismanagement and lack of oversight. Ratepayers have been subject to devastating rate increases and the system remains out of compliance with state law. The Water and Sewer Commission maintains that it is a separate legal entity not under the oversight of the board of selectmen and therefore the only oversight by the voters at town meeting. The current litigation has been exacerbated by the commission, though the cost of said litigation will be borne exclusively by the taxpayers of Troy. The commission was created by a vote of town meeting and the commission can be abolished by a vote at town meeting. Majority vote required. Comments or questions?
Mike Leclerc, twenty-five Big Oak Road, also Water and Sewer Commission Chair. I just, the question I have is whether people would have signed this if it was factual for most of it, but I'll just run down the quick. I'll be completely transparent and honest, you know, extremely honest. If you told me tomorrow that I didn't have to report back for the warrants for commission duty, I might not be upset. We meet more than any other board in town, more often and our meetings last longer than all of them. We have a group that always shows up and participates. I'm not on the system. If rates go through the roof because of this, then it doesn't affect me. So some of these, I want to argue, I want to start with the obvious. There's a line that says taxpayers do not enjoy the benefits of the system, pay the lion's share of the cost due to the long history of expansion. So lion's share in my definition, not my definition, definition is the largest portion. Since we're here in front of the budget committee tonight, I had prepared what Mr. Ferris has pointed out is the lion's share. So the little green area is what he has determined is the lion's share paid by taxpayers presumably not on the system. So that's paid by both taxpayers on and off the system. So again, if I go back to taxpayers who do not enjoy the benefits, that number drops again almost a half. So about four percent of the budget is paid by people who do not enjoy the system. Also, I want to argue with the Water and Sewer Commission maintains it's a separate legal entity. That was decided by the State of Deanshur Court. The current litigation has been exacerbated by the commission. I do not agree with this. While the taxpayer may be responsible for a premium change through the insurance company, the taxpayers are not bearing any of the legal fees associated with this. The only person who sees more legal fees because of this is the person who created this article. Which leads me to another comment about the fact that the only person who benefits should this pass is the person who created the petition warrant. If any of us were in court, we could eliminate the person we were in court against, or one of the parties in court. That would be a wonderful thing, wouldn't it? It would also allow himself the lion's pockets at the same time.
Easy, Mike.
So that all means that again, like I said, if people read this and were described this when they were signing this, they were misled. I don't know if we would have had enough signatures to do so. And, you know, just to play this out, if this were to happen, anybody who was here for the public hearing for the last rate increase, the state, with the DES, joined us to talk about it, to kind of soften the blow up what that is. I have no doubt that is devastating for some people. Especially on fixed incomes, again, the same thing holds true. Eggs, groceries, gas, insurance, electricity, oil. We're affected by the same bills that everybody else is. That fifty-five thousand dollars that was considered the lion's share barely pays the electric bill. Our electric bill is fifty-three thousand dollars a year. So again, um, that lion's share barely keeps the lights on for us. The DES has stated at that meeting that they didn't care what our rates were. We probably should have doubled. That was their worst. They, whatever they are, they should be more. The Board has done a good job of trying to spread those out over a longer period of time. Um, it's just an unfortunate fact. If you look at one of the charts in there that I, I saw tonight, we, we, our expenditures have, have gone over what we've budgeted for and trying to keep that as close to reasonable as possible and not have it hurt the, the people of Troy. Obviously, that, um, with that, that, you know, I often wonder why I get so excited about this and, and get so frustrated about it, but it's really not about the water and sewer system and that. It's about, you know, our, our residents being misled into doing something that's just not true.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this one? None?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I have a question. What's, uh, what's this article about?
It's the abolishment of the Water and Sewer Commission.
Again?
Article number forty-three.
So again, for the second year?
Correct.
Want to take up the water department? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The, um, does the Select Board want to reply to any of this? The, um, I know last year you had indicated that, um, should the Water and Sewer Commission abolish it, all of these duties would fall on the the Select Board and last year your response to that was, no, thank you.
I think I can say with great surety that I speak for all three Selectmen that, um, we will, if, if this article passed, we would do whatever we legally had to do to represent the best interests of the town of Troy. But and operate the system, but it is not a job we are looking for. We we don't get paid that well.
My only comment to add to this is that, um, you know, that I echo a lot of what Mike stated, but, um, I don't think it can be understated that if the Water and Sewer Commission goes away, the Select Board certainly won't be able to handle an eight-person job. They have a hard enough time handling their three-person job as it is. The Water and Sewer Commission has a hard enough time handling their five-person job. So once that happens, um, where, where does that leave everybody? There's a lot going on down there. If that thing disappears and the commission disappears and that work gets, I don't know, waylaid for a very short period of time, we're in trouble quickly, very quickly. So, and I know the state would be itching to, uh, take this over and the first thing they'd do is hire a third party. We're looking at, we're looking at budgets that, that pales, that this pales in comparison to, so, um, yeah, this would be a huge mistake for the towns to vote for this. I, I trust that they, they wouldn't make this mistake, but. Okay, and move on.
Article forty-four, highway excavator. To see if the town votes to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing an excavator and all necessary equipment for the highway department and transfer station. And to see if the town will authorize the withdrawal of up to eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the highway department equipment capital reserve fund and up to eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the transfer station recycling center equipment special revenue fund. Majority vote required. The Board of Select would recommend this appropriation. The Budget Committee does not recommend this appropriation.
So I'll, um, I'll just comment on behalf of the Budget Committee as to why we decided not to recommend this, um, this appropriation. And it's not so much that we don't need a new piece of equipment. It's just a piece of equipment that, um, was chosen for this warrant article. It's, um, it's, it's a very nice piece of equipment. Well, that's putting it lightly. It's a beautiful piece of equipment. Um, and it is, it is all the money, um, that you could possibly spend on, on a, um, on a mini excavator excavator of this size. And we just thought that there was a, um, there was a, a better option price-wise that fit Troy, um, than this one does. Um, I know this thing would be awesome to have, but it is, it is a, a ton of money for a six-ton excavator. So again, beautiful piece of equipment, but we just felt like this could be done with, with, with a lot less money. And, and honestly, the hundred seventy-five, if, if a portion of that was spent on an excavator and, um, other portions were spent on, on, on other pieces of equipment that we need, um, to replace. I mean, we talked about the, uh, the increase of the, um, capital reserve deposits that we need to be putting in in order to meet the needs of, um, capital replacement over a time period and, and this certainly eats into that quite heavily for this one piece of equipment. We've got lots of equipment down there, so. I think that was the sentiment of the, um, of the Budget Committee. No knock to John, of course. Anybody have any questions or thoughts on this?
Yeah, where's the money coming from?
So it's coming out of two different accounts, um, both of which are capital reserve accounts. One, one is the highway department capital reserve account. On the other one's actually a special revenue fund, but it comes from the transfer station. Eighty-seven five from each.
So none of the money will come from taxation?
Well, the way those accounts are funded is by taxation and, um, and fees generated at the transfer station, so. So, and we use those monies to offset taxation, so if we, if we spend it all now, we're going to have to fill those coffers again at some point, so.
I got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? John, did you want to? No, you're good.
The only thing I can say is, like you said earlier, we don't have to spend that whole hundred and seventy-five thousand.
What should we lower it to? If it's a hundred seventy-five sitting there, I'm what should we lower it to, John?
Let me make a phone call tomorrow.
Okay. All right, we're discussing it here tonight, so there's some opportunities.
This is all the time. As you may have heard what this one is?
Yeah.
There's some opportunity to, to lower it down. Why don't you hang out for a minute after the, after the public hearing? And, because we, we don't have another business meeting to address this, so that's our last chance to do it, so let's talk about that a little bit afterwards, but, um, but yeah, if, if that's something you're willing to do. That's obviously going to go on the warrant as it is and it's, it's going to show up at town meeting, so. It doesn't have to change.
Article forty-five, Gap Mountain Road and West Hill Road. Exact language to be determined. Swap of Class Five and Six Road. The Board of Select would recommend this article. Uh, Dick, you're on.
So this is fairly if you don't think about it too hard, it's a straightforward. We have a little section of road, uh, off of Corrie Road that is technically a Class Five road. And we have a little section of road up past the Blueberry Farm on Toll Road that is technically a Class Six road. But the Class Six road has been upgraded and the Class Five road has deteriorated and is really somebody's driveway. And it's never going to be expanded or go anyplace, ever, at all. Not possible. So this goes back to the highway block grant we spoke about earlier in the meeting. We're s- we're s- we are swapping out roughly equal sections of road so that we can open up the Class Six road and count that as a Class Five road. It will allow a building permit to be issued down there and the Class Five, the Class Six road, the Class Five road will then become a Class Six road, which doesn't matter because it's really his driveway and there's no building going on there. So it's a swap out of two small sections of road. The block grant remains roughly the same and you make a couple of people happy and it reflects the reality of the situation. And we get taxes from buildings.
Any questions on that one? Okay. That concludes our, um, reading of the warrant. I just want to bring your, bring to your attention the, um, the later pages in the handout. This is one I was holding up, this is one I was holding up when Scott had the question earlier about, um, increasing expenses. Um, if you go down through these, these are kind of nice to look at just to give you, give you a rough idea of, you know, where we come from and where we're at today and hopefully it's not an indication of where we're going in the future, but it does give you some idea of the trend, so. Um, we have an overall for the entire town on the first page of this and then they break down the, the larger budgets down throughout. I think the only one in here that, uh, that really hasn't, hasn't had a major impact, which is interesting enough, is our, um, the, uh, sorry, the Welfare General Assistance Budget on, uh, page thirty. It does have some bump up, but it's, um, it's been pretty well managed for, for a number of years now, so. I can answer any questions on those, on those other reports and if we don't have any, then we'll, uh, we'll conclude our public hearing. Is there anything else to, are we good?
I have a question.
Yes, Scott.
What, what is our overall budget going to be for this year?
The, the grand total budget, if everything is approved, does anybody, do you have that number for everybody, Chance? Well, I hate to make you do math, but it's, um, it's, it's Article eleven plus every single appropriation, um, within the warrant if they all pass. So Article eleven being the, the operating budget, which is the lion's share.
What was it last year?
Um, so the overall budget last year was three, while looking at the operating budget, the overall budget was three point one one million last year and it's three point four nine four million this year. That's just the operating budget. That doesn't include the special warrant articles.
Right, so it was like five, almost six million last year?
No, I don't, I don't think we had that much on the, no. It's a good question, Scott. If you give us a second here, I think we can throw that number out there. Scott, not to, um, yeah, not to skip any question, although it seems like it's going to take us a minute to pull that number together, so why don't we, uh, why don't we make that available, uh, maybe online somewhere or, or on the, uh, the town website after the, after we settle the business tonight. Is that okay? How do you know what that is? The operating budget is the lion's share, but this is actually the true lion's share of the budget. Any other questions without us doing math? Okay, hearing none. I will, uh, close the public hearing seven twenty-nine PM and, um, we'll reopen the business meeting of the Budget Committee at seven twenty-nine PM. Uh, thank you all very much for coming. Appreciate it. You're more than welcome to hang out and listen to us chatter about a few items that we have to go over. I don't think we have much to go over, but, uh, again, we appreciate you all coming out and have a good night.
All right, everybody's legs stretched. We'll get this meeting over with. Come on back to the table. If you're on the button, I got it. Well, I was like, of course.
If you're on the button, I got it, well, I'm sliding, of course. Yes, she had some, she had a little more down. Fourteen, Jackie. Alright, so it looks like we only have one item to address, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the ambulance budget item that needs to be adjusted down by five thousand dollars with the payroll line item. What's the grand total, Jeremy, please?
Charity budget?
Nope. Ambulance.
Two-three-six, six-three-eight?
Yep. So, the, so the budget is dropping by five thousand dollars plus payroll liabilities as has already been calculated, and it's two-three-six, six-three-eight, correct?
For ambulance tip.
For ambulance. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the new number on that.
Make some motion.
Matt's motion, can I get a second? Second for Steve? I, I, I heard a whisper down there. We'll get to Jamie, yeah? Get that one to Dave. Alright. Alright, so any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Abstentions? Motion terrest? Did you guys want to cross that one for a pusher?
You're a big boy.
Pick up, no, scratch it over here. No, I wanna know, first thing, what's the change? Oh, they're gone.
So, John?
Not here.
It could go on just the way it is, but it doesn't have to change, but if you, but those comments that I made tonight, I'll definitely be making at, you know, on behalf of the Budget Committee, I'll be making those comments again on, on that town meeting. So, if you feel compelled to make any change, where this is kind of your last, your last chance to do it.
Talking mark, please, we can drop one to one hundred and forty.
One forty?
Still be confident.
Okay, then what are we at now?
Seven-five.
Seven-five, so thirty-five right now. So, I got a, I got a couple ideas on that. So, if the Budget, if the Budget Committee's not interested in that number as well, I would recommend that we leave it like this, and then you make that adjustment at town meeting. And then you can, that'll give you a chance to explain what you're, why you're dropping it, the piece of equipment, how it's changed and all of that, and I think that would probably land a little better, especially if the Budget Committee's still not willing to support the one forty. So, with that said, I would entertain a motion to support the one forty as the new number. Got a motion from Deck, I'm surprised you're still here. Okay, Matt? Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Okay. Well, if we don't have a second, then it's gonna die, but anyway, go ahead with your question.
Is there any possible way you could go any cheaper than that? Than one forty? To get a decent machine?
Decent machines between one forty and...
Yeah, well, do I, I'm not hearing another, I'm not hearing a second, so I think probably Plan B is the, the right thing to do. When you get to town meeting, implement the amendment to the warrant article and then explain what it is, the new, the newer, different piece of equipment for the less price, what that looks like. So, I'd feel better about that too anyway, because then I know exactly what it is that they're gonna handle. Little bit under the gun tonight, so it's okay. We appreciate that. Okay. Anything else that we need to address from the meetings? I don't think there was any substantial major input. I mean, we could lose four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Scott, but we might be in trouble. We, we tried, Scott.
How is the rate of increase compared to the rate of inflation? Before the last, before, we started twenty-twenty ago with that number, we're, we had to take off there, and now we're off.
Yeah, cause what did we see in inflation over that period of time? Was it a total of twenty-two or something like that?
That's what they gave us, maybe with about twenty.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so, alright, so twenty-three percent, so we're up, our, our budget in twenty-twenty was two million thirty-eight thousand dollars, and our new budget is, I'm gonna make sure I have that correct. Just wanna make sure that that's not excluding the water. Tillie, twenty-seven. Nine-two-seven. Two-oh-two-seven, nine-two-seven. Two-oh-three-eight, five-one-nine.
Two million thirty-eight thousand.
Yep.
The denominator is three-four, ninety-four.
Notice I skipped twenty-two?
Yeah.
Because of the, the graph? I don't know if that was the year we had half down there and half up here or something like that, or something weird going on there, something like that, so I don't know, I didn't, I didn't have the numbers in my report, so I skipped twenty-two altogether.
And how much to, as the quarter of super operating costs go up? Your, your cost went up?
Yeah, the, so, go, twenty-eight doesn't sound right. Well, if, if it went up fifteen million, if it went up one point five million on two million, that's a ratio, that's a sixty percent percent. That's forty-seven percent.
Would you say for a super operation?
What else?
Yeah, so it's seventy-two. You've got the opposite number, you did twenty, you got twenty-eight, which is the other side, you got seventy-two. I bet you ain't, that's why you're twenty.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, what do you call, what do you do for inflation?
Twenty-two is the inflation.
Yeah, we're, we're probably right on track.
That's not annual, that was cumulative, the twenty-two is cumulative.
Oh, from?
From nineteen to whatever pandemic time, but I think it was twenty-two or twenty-three percent.
So, over the last four years?
Yeah. So, yes, we're fifty percent of public, of public inflation, so we definitely got the order big enough, but our, our water sewer budget went from four-nineteen to six-fifty-eight. So, that is, well, the same.
So, you actually have to go back to...
Yeah, sixty percent, so it's a little, little less about this. It's comparable, and I, and I guarantee you, one of the biggest components of all of this is payroll costs. And I bet if you, I bet if you stripped out the payroll costs, that would be, I mean, that, that would be, look, sharp. We're just, we had the, the library budget, so if it went up that much, well, it did, but it went up, it went from one forty to one seventy-five, and sort of, and, and almost all of it is, is helping, so, yeah.
Yeah, payroll costs.
I mean, it's just getting ridiculous. It's getting, it's getting ridiculous, and I, and it's, it's too bad too that they don't have like, people that don't use their health insurance at all, you know, young people, and you still pay the, you still pay the thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we had people on payroll that, where we switched over from Obamacare for regular, we have the board for this, but I used, I used to make sure that I hired younger people and gave those health insurance, because they did, they waited, they did a weighted pool. And so, if I had ten people on health insurance and four of them were under twenty-five, it actually weighted the pool way down, and so the grade would go from being, at the time, three or four hundred dollars, one down to like one hundred and eight. And, and then the other thing, when you look at the health insurance cost, your plan for build, and they have, and you have to make all those purchases, they have to build all this stuff into the plan, and the other thing that we lost to Obamacare is the ability to tailor a plan. So, you know, if you have a fifty-year-old woman who's had her good time, you still have to pay for maternity care.
One of the things that we talked about during the budget season, and I think is gonna be key, is looking at some sort of high deductible, whether they, with a health savings account or something like that.
Well, and I, I think, I think that's, that would be an excellent thing to do with the town, because when you look at what our employees contributing towards their health insurance, it's, it's minimal by current industry standards. If you go work at CNS, you don't get a plan that looks anything like this.
Yep, and even if you do a high deductible, we cover the deductible, and it just sits in that account, they make, you know, those people that never use it, it just sits there, you don't have to continue to add to that, that, that thing gets its max, and you just keep the, the town keeps it maxed out, and you benefit every time they don't use that. So, and, and the prices for high deductible plans are way long, way long, so, anyway. Something put on our list for the first meeting, but that we'd like to see happen.
Well, then, then if they go high deductible, they're, they can set up a H T S A too.
Right, and we would fund that, that would be a part of the, the benefit package.
That's, that stays with them.
For sure.
There's, that doesn't have to be used that year.
There's tax break too, but anyway. Does anybody have anything else down there in the peanut cap three? Alright, so, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this Budget Committee meeting for the last few years.
Most prepared?
Most by Steve? Yeah. Al, Al seconded, Al, Al seconded. All in favor?
Aye.